This evening. We missed you.
Speak for yourself.
All right, we on, we live?
The meeting tonight is for the conduct of town business by the town board. The public is invited to participate at the items marked on the agenda, public comment. During that segment of the meeting, if you have a question or comment for the supervisor, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please state your name. Do that all the time. And limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation.
Thank you, Danielle. I'd like to start the meeting off with the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our brave men and women fighting all over the world for democracy and freedom, especially those in arms' way. Also pray for the people down in Texas, that terrible massacre at their church. Thank you. We also have a public hearing amending the zoning map of the town of Marlboro to establish a business corridor overlay district under the town code section 155-12H covering property at 1613 Route 9W, Milton, New York, more particularly described as tax parcel number Like I said, it's a public hearing and it's about an overlay zone that the board established a couple of years ago. Any questions on this particular public hearing? Being said, there's none, make a motion to close the public hearing?
No motion. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Before we start the agenda, I'd like to amend the agenda to include Joel to do a public presentation on Resolution 108. I'm gonna try this, Joel. San Tissel, is it Tissel Ban?
San Tissel Ban.
Tissel Ban?
Yeah.
Tissel Ban, there you go. I have a hard enough time.
You gonna amend it, you said?
Yeah, to have him and also Resolution 108, we just added that. That's on that text.
I'll second. I made a motion to amend.
I'll second to amend.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. Motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to approve minutes from the October 23, 2017 town board meeting?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Motion to approve minutes from the October 23, 2017 public hearing?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to authorize payment of bills in the amount of $141,501.40.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pay the bills. Any comments on the agenda? James, step up.
As long as these gentlemen are making a presentation, I presume it's on Bayside?
No, it isn't.
It isn't?
No.
Oh.
It's on actually our whole relationship with Sun Energy.
But you are having...
That should do about the landfill and the solar system that we would like to put up there.
Solar farm.
Solar farm.
Solar farm?
Solar system.
Solar farm.
And you have a resolution on that tonight?
Yeah.
Perhaps you would consider moving the resolution up earlier so they can actually see the vote and can leave?
Yeah, actually, that's a great...
Thank you, James.
You're welcome.
I wouldn't have thought of that, but... So Joel, you wanna come up and just talk about what we have as a resolution for the CCA?
CCA, yeah, exactly. Definitely, I'll be more brief than last time. Just so we're all on the same page, you know, I'm speaking in regard to this CCA, Local Community Choice Aggregation, is what that stands for, law, which will effectively give the town an option to enact a CCA or join a CCA program if they choose in the future. What community choice aggregation is, very briefly, is it's a program that was initiated by New York State just back in 2016, April 2016, and it allows municipalities to kind of come together and bundle their electricity demand and as a result achieve work to achieve, hope to achieve competitive pricing versus the utility, which is Central Hudson here. And so, we, Southern Energy, have been working very hard with a number of your neighbors and actually since we last spoke, since my presentation, we've officially enacted the program with the Village of Wapentures Falls. So they're number one and, you know, Town of Marlboro, hopefully will be number two or three depending on some other communities that we're working with, City of Poughkeepsie, Town of Wapentures, Poughkeepsie, Town of Poughkeepsie as well. Now that kind of the dust has settled with elections, we kind of were able to really, really do our part to educate these respective communities in that effort. We have a lot of materials. I'd love to make sure that at least you guys get one of each of these things, but I'll leave them out here on the table for everybody, which basically goes through high level, what community choice aggregation is, how it benefits the town, how it allows the town to procure energy from a solar farm like the one we're considering at 20 Bailey's Gap Road, the town landfill. And it gives you kind of a step-by-step as to the process to make it happen. So we have some information, brochures, flyers, I'll leave those on the table and I'll make sure you guys get one at the end. And, yeah, I'm here for, my partner Gus and I are here to answer any questions with regard to the CCA, but the goal, I suppose, is to have it up again on November 27, the following meeting for a public hearing and to be voted on. And, you know, ahead of that, we want to make sure that there's no kind of unanswered questions with regard to the law, at least, you know, there's definitely a lot more discussions to be had to understand what exactly the Southern Energy Program is going to be doing, how we're going to be doing it, how we're different. But that's the CCA law with regard to the project. We've been in discussions as, you know, particularly working with Al as well as Ronald Blast and, you know, we've been moving forward. There are some, kind of, kinks with regard to, you know, environmental aspects of the site itself that we'll have to really dig into. The fact of the matter is, you know, our company isn't at liberty to make any final calls on those things. That's the EPA, the ECI, those types of organizations. So there's, with this particular site, though, it's exciting from the perspective of it's not doing anything currently and it's uneconomical currently to taking it to a, to be a fully-developed solar farm, there are some kind of unusual hurdles that we'll get over, so. Yeah.
So I just want to make sure and that the audience is aware that all the money spent for attorney fees are, you have paid the attorney, well, the attorney has told us what the amount is and you have sent a check for that amount, so in return, we pay the attorneys. It's kind of almost like an escrow, but it's on the basis of what the attorney spends his time on, like, the lease that he's working with now with your attorneys, right? And then that cost is related to you, you give us a check and then when the voucher comes in from the attorney, we send him a check.
Exactly.
So that's the way that's done. So right now is, you're up to date on your payments, I think Ron's happy with the way the process is going. So this entail doesn't, the town doesn't have any obligation to do anything with this resolution that we're introducing. So to the advice of our attorney, he said there's no problem by introducing this piece of legislation and have a public hearing and moving forward. So we're looking forward. The next step is really the meat of the whole thing is the lease agreement, what we come up with that.
Yes.
And how that goes by. And so basically, this board is gonna be the lead agency, I think, but I think we're not going through the planning board because we don't have to have that obligation of doing that, so... So it'll be up to this board to decide at the end what the lease and everything else. I think we've heard as far as lease amounts, what you're obligated to do and it's, we think it's low, but it's probably what the environment calls for, right?
Yeah.
It's around 21, 22,000 a year?
Twenty-four, assuming we build a two-megawatt system.
Two megawatts?
It's on a megawatt basis.
Okay. So hopefully, everything will go well and we'll be able to do this.
Yeah.
And I appreciate your time and...
Yeah, this is what we do, absolutely. We're happy to be here. And it's good to know that you guys will be the lead, kind of, go-to guys here on this because, you know, part of the effort here with outreach and making sure that everybody's on the same page is having those go-to people to bounce questions off of and communicate with, so.
I disagree. It's a great location, I don't think there's too many residential homes around there, so...
Yeah, absolutely. It really is a win-win.
They'll come out.
And I'd like to just say, you know, on public record, we spoke about this, Al, to make sure that everybody understands the solar farm at that location, there are, like I said, there are things that are outside of our power that could potentially derail the project.
Sure.
And we're at the very early stages. That project itself is certainly and entirely separate from the CCA, although they could be connected.
Right.
Right? The CCA basically gives the town this opportunity, this currently unexisting opportunity, to take the energy that's produced at that facility and all the benefits that come with it because it's not the actual power, it's the credits and we can dive into the details, but take those benefits and distribute it to every single person in the community, the residents, the businesses, the municipal accounts, you know, whoever is currently a default power consumer with the utility, with Central Hudson, they will be able to take those benefits from a solar farm like that and, you know, ideally see savings on their bills, so. That's the goal here, that's the big picture, the ideals kind of outcome of this all, but the CCA is one piece of it and the facility itself is a separate project.
Yep. And what did Wapentures go forward with, just the law or the, an actual project?
The Village of Wapentures Falls, it went forward with the Sun and Energy Program. So the law allows you to join a program, they joined our program, the Sun and Energy Program, which requires one extra step. So once the law is passed, then obviously you have the option, so now you can exercise that option by signing and authorizing what's called a memorandum of understanding that basically says, I, you know, we, the Town of Marlboro as an entity agrees to join the Village of Wapentures Falls in the Sun and Energy Program, which effectively allows, within the timeframe that we spoke about, I mean, this will be approximately, you know, 12 to 16 months horizon before the program itself is actually procuring this energy, ideally from a facility at the landfill, but Village joined the program, so now they are part of this collective, which will, you know, Town of Wapentures, Town of Marlboro, Town of Wapentures, City of Poughkeepsie, other interested parties that we expect to join, they will come all together, there will be an advisory board, effectively, who will be stewarding the program, guiding the program, making the decisions for what this program does and where it buys its power from and potentially buy from solar farms, potentially buy from solar farms outside of the Town of Marlboro, existing solar farms.
But they're not, they're not building a solar farm?
They don't have space, the Village of Wapentures Falls doesn't have land, yeah. Town of Wapentures does.
Is Poughkeepsie, you just threw that out there or are they considering?
No, that, no, I did not, no, Mark Nelson I've been speaking with, he's, as of, you know, two weeks ago, the acting city administrator there, as well, we have relationships in the town.
What's his name, Mark Nelson?
Mark Nelson was the commissioner of finance, he got bumped when Deb McDonald resigned to the acting city administrator, and he's been playing that role, obviously very busy as a result, but, yeah, they have the CCA law, it's with their council. So they're in similar stages as the Town of Marlboro.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Like I said, I'll leave the materials just here.
Be great.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Reports. My supervisor's report. I met with Stephen Schmidt, contractor of Milton Train Station Rehabilitation, to discuss work change order. We talked about this, Al, about the insulation and then the actual concrete work, so we got approval to do that. Contract signing for Milton Sewer Extension, we see that the equipment's out there, they actually started the project, so that's a good thing. Meeting with David Lovell regarding town insurance needs, met that with Councilman Corcoran. Met with Ted Bartlett, who's the consultant on the Milton Train Station to review work being done. Everything is being done satisfactorily to Ted, we're moving along. If you have a chance, just go down there, you can see the progress with the painting and it's just absolutely, it's gonna be gorgeous, it's really gonna be a great thing. The gateway meeting with all the county representatives, utility representatives, attorneys, and applicants, representatives discussed warehouse project on Route 9W. Met with Gary and Mr. Tronsley this evening about that, how about, how we could actually accomplish that, it's pretty challenging. And it's challenging because on the east side is the high-pressure Central Hudson gas line, and if we go on the west side, it's all stone, so we're trying to work that through. Met with Mickey Jamal and reported for the Southern Ocean Times to discuss progress on the Chestnut Petroleum Dunkin' Donut Project. Some people call it a gas station, whatever you wanna call it, that project is going forward. I met with Mickey this morning, we had a great conversation, they hired somebody that's actually doing some work for them right now, same concept, so they're moving along on that. So hopefully, we'll see some sort of building permit to take down that old eyesore. Participated in town recreation, trunk or treat, had a great time, I think that was, the 10 years that we've been doing this, I think that was the biggest turnout, there's about 300 people there, 300 kids, and they had a great time with safety, thank you, chief. Thank you to Officer Fulton, and I think it was just basically weather-related, it was so nice and warm out, so everybody came out, so it was a good thing. Had a press conference with Senator Larkin, Assemblyman Scartados, and the town board to announce joint funding for the $500,000 to extend sewer up Route 9W in Marlboro, which is a great thing for Marlboro. Attended the Veterans Day Ceremony at the Marlboro Middle School and attended official opening of Dan Skammer House in Marlboro. So, yeah, been a little busy, also campaigning, so...
You won an election.
Won an election. And so, Howard, I didn't have a chance to talk to the cools about the name, how they came, do you know how they came up with Dan Skammer?
No, it's not a good name.
No, I don't know.
That brings bad memories to a lot of people.
Every time I hear it, I say, why could they pick another name?
I'm sure it is a reason for it.
I know.
Well, I mean, and maybe, you know, it is an Indian name, but, or something, but I, you know, I don't know.
That name brings a lot of tax dollars.
Yeah, I don't know why they chose it.
I just, it's gotta be a reason because they're pretty educated people, so hopefully. So you wanna read your brother's report?
He won't forget the name, that's for sure, Al. All right. Monthly report, Building Department, month of October 2017, certificate occupancy for stop work order zero, request for information 17, CBA application zero, trailer park renewal zero, order remedy 16, building extension six, complaints 28, fire inspections 26, burn permits 25, fire call zero, clothing bin renewal zero, total building permits 31, 1-1 family, 1-2 family, three electrical generators, three furnaces, two tank installations, two stoves, one pool hot tub, three sheds, five roofs, one barn, four addition renovations, two decks, and three solar panels. Estimated cost of building $671,099. Certificate of occupancy $400, request for information $1700, building extension $600, building permits $6,479, fire inspection fees $1,840, total mileage 941 miles, total gas usage 61 gallons, total monthly receipts $11,019. Thomas Corcoran, building inspector.
Thank you, Thomas. Chief?
Monthly report for October 2017. Motor vehicle personal injury accidents, four, fatal, zero, property damage accidents, 11, accidents not requiring report, four, for a total of 19 for the month. Summonments issued, vehicle in traffic, 97, parking violations, two, total blotter entries, 344 with 22 arrests. Telephone calls handled, 1,710 calls, police department overtime, we have part-time dispatchers, 24 hours, police mileage 12,488 miles with a consumption of 998.535 gallons. Halloween went off without a hitch, very good this year, not a lot of, actually no complaints related to Halloween.
None, you guys had good coverage, I was down in the Hamlet.
None at all?
Yep.
Do we have a crosstalk?
Dust to dawn.
Technically, no. Not on the books.
I did the Hamlet of Marlboro and all the people said that there was a big turnout, it was a big turnout, but the people that, you know, the homeowners we talked to, they said there were a lot of parents there and there were a lot of parents on the streets.
The trend lately, over the last few years, is not a lot of trick-or-treaters at all. This year, tremendous amount of young kids, kids that should be out trick-or-treating, tremendous result, showing from them, and they were well-guided by their parents. Basically, the patrolmen that worked, I think there were six of them, plus the sea lion, gave out candy all night. That's really all they had to do, which was great because they just drove around looking for groves of kids with parents and delved out the candy, so it was very nice.
Yeah.
That's good.
It's great.
They go to my house.
Yeah. Any questions?
Hey, Jerry, I just thought, I mean, I don't know what you know the answer, but how come last October there were so many vehicle in traffic compared to this year?
I don't know, I saw...
Did you ever detail? It's like three times the amount.
Depending on monies we had, DWI monies, things like that, I mean, I can go back and research why, I don't know off the top of my head, but I did notice that when I was putting the report together, there was only 100, well, just under 100 tickets, and last year there was like three something.
Yeah.
But even the arrests are a little bit down. I'm sure we did, seatbelt money, something like that, we had to use before the fall, so.
Mileage looks good the year to date, too.
Yeah, we're not doing too bad. You know, it makes a big difference on their consumption because the new cars get a lot better gas mileage.
Yeah.
Like what? What do they get?
Close to 16, even on the all-wheel-drive chargers.
Yeah, which is good.
The old chargers, the 06s and so forth, they only did nine, 10 on a good day, so 16 is pretty good, especially around town. It's not bad at all.
And we could get those Priuses.
Yeah, sure we could.
Howard wanted those a long time ago.
There's a lot of agencies, there are a lot of agencies that are required to do some sort of green...
They got nice Priuses, blacked out.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it. Blacked-out Prius.
We're gonna put big wheels on it for you.
Highway superintendent.
Super battery.
Okay. Monthly report for October 2017, roads, we worked on a couple, we worked a couple days finishing up the sidewalk project on Grand Street, we filled the cut edge of the sidewalks and then with item four and then completed this for paving. We cut and repaved driveway edges on 10-4, we had a Vennett in paving, repaired all the cut areas and sealed these with hot tar. We did blacktop repairs on Brewster Street, Sands Avenue, Lily Lane, and Indian Trail. We put up stop-ahead signs before the intersections of Bingham and Latentown with reflective stripes on the posts for better sight at night. We installed 100-foot of 12-inch PVC pipe and one curb cut on Idawayo and repaired the rest with a ditch line. We repaired two road cuts for Water Department on Route 9W and also on Church and Main Street in Milton. We started our final mowing of the road sides on 10-16. We repaired a run-of-guard rail on Ridge Road. We cut and formed and poured a handicap ramp in front of the Milton Library. We blacktopped the new pipe we put in on Idawayo Road. We milled out bad asphalt on Mount Zion Road and Willow Tree Road and repaired these. On 10-31, after the rainy and heavy winds, we cut and chipped three trees on Hillside, Wildflower and Willow Tree. Brush slash weeds, we cut brush on the intersection of Route 9W and Old Post Road for sight distance. We cut and chipped up two trees on Woodcrest Drive and the town park. We mowed the landfill cap for the final time this year. Maintenance, we started prepping, repairing, installing our sanders for the winter. Fuel usage, gas, 356.566 gallons, diesel, 672.134 gallons. Respectfully submitted, Galaplan Highway Superintendent.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Nothing.
The MEO that he hired...
I got that in correspondence.
Anthony, is that, yeah, I just wanted to say, is that, was it, doesn't he have, does he have two openings or one opening right now? Just the one?
Yeah. I think only one for...
Well, Malphite left.
Malphite left.
And then Kovacs left, but we replaced Kovacs.
And he replaced Kovacs.
Yeah.
With the boy that was with, what's his name?
So we only, so this was the second one?
Yeah.
I just was there.
Ex and...
He's a good kid.
Water superintendent.
Problem is the young guys don't stay.
Monthly report for October, water consumption total 14.4 million gallons, which is a daily usage of 463,000, compared to last month, 13.9 million gallons, which is a daily usage of 466,000. Somehow it...
It doesn't...
That doesn't make sense, does it?
Which one?
Because if you have 14.4 and you're using 463, maybe that's an area...
Fewer days, wouldn't be a day, maybe.
Compared to a year ago, water consumption was 14.7 million for the month, which is a daily usage of 473,000. Summary for the month, hydrants, we started flushing hydrants and finished, we are draining hydrants and also installing snow markers on them, valves, we continue to inspect and clean all the valves in our system for working order. We had to repair valves on Church Street and Grand Street. Billing, bills went out at the beginning of the month, please be patient because of our new software. If you have any problems with the bill, feel free to give us a call. Service line inspection, zero, closings, five, markouts, 20, gallons of gas, 260, gallons of diesel, zero, mileage for the month is 1830. So I have to check with Troy, I think there's an error there.
I think it's just a typo.
Typo?
Yeah, that's for sure.
We don't let anything go by.
Run a tight ship here.
Danielle?
Yeah.
How are you this evening, Danielle?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Town Clerk Monthly Report for October, conservation, also sporting licenses, 14, first $70.39. Total of 27 dog licenses for $155. 30 punch cards for $2,175. Marriage licenses, three, $52.50. Building department fees, $7,514.70. Fire inspection fees, $200. Zoning fees, $300. Accident reports, 25 transactions for... Accident reports, twenty-five transactions for a hundred and thirty dollars. Certified copies, ten transactions for four hundred and seventy dollars. Dog warden, one for two hundred and twenty dollars. Foil requests, two transactions for twenty-seven seventy-five. Uh, train station fee, one for one hundred and fifty dollars. And jujitsu, um, that's two months, I believe, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. And, uh, grand total was eleven thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars, thirty-four cents.
So Danielle, the.
Yes.
That was, uh, the dog warden.
Mm-hmm.
So, but two hundred and twenty dollars, that was, um, somebody had to give to release their dog?
Yes. It was for an impound fee and whatever.
Bail money?
Yeah, bail money.
That's the first. Train station.
Conservation, that's just hunting licenses?
That's hunting, fishing, yep. Sporting licenses, um, that's.
Cause that seems, that seems low, cause fourteen, that's about five dollars.
It is low, cause that's what we get. We only get like a very, very, very small percentage, two percent, maybe? I don't even know what it is. Yeah, no. Um, down, I think on the bottom, amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation, one thousand two hundred five dollars, sixty-one cents. So add those two together and that's the total we brought in. All right?
Thank you, Danielle.
You're welcome.
Thank you for doing a great job with the web, too.
Web design.
We, uh, it'd be nice if more people looked at it and saw what we're doing. So, uh, wastewater treatment facility, I, I can read this thing without, uh, have it memorized. Before I do the Marlboro wastewater treatment plant for October twenty-seventeen, the average flow to the plant was a hundred and eighteen thousand gallons per day. This was an average month and about sixty-seven of design capacity, which is a hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons per day. So, how many gallons, uh, capacity we have in the Marlboro? As a test.
A hundred and seventy-five.
A hundred and seventy-five? It's the same one every time. It's not gonna be for long, huh?
No.
Well, the hundred and seventy-five will be constant.
Oh, yes.
Uh, the process is working well, meeting speediest requirement. They have results show that we removed ninety-nine percent of BOD and ninety-seven percent of suspended solids during the month. Same with the Milton Ward, uh, wastewater treatment plant, the average flow to the Milton plant during October twenty-seventeen was thirty-one thousand, thirty-one thousand gallons per day. This is about fifty-six percent of design capacity, which is fifty-five thousand gallons per day. We showed ninety, ninety-nine percent of BOD and ninety-four percent of, uh, TSS removal. The process is working well, meeting speediest require, requirements. Overall, both wastewater treatment plants are in good working order. If you need any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me, Tony Falco. Do you have any idea how old those plants are now?
The Marlboro plant?
Yeah, Marlboro or Milton.
I know the one in Milton was donated by Turning Stones Casino, so it was used when we got it.
But that was part of the HUD program.
Yeah, I think the Milton sewer district went in in ninety-seven?
Ninety-eight?
Just asking, I, I.
Marlboro's gotta be what?
Mil, Milton was like ninety-eight.
Forty years old? Forty years old?
Yeah, our sewer district. Pretty sure that was like ninety-eight or ninety-nine.
I think it's about. I remember him saying that, cause he said, pretty soon we're gonna have to replace, uh, some parts.
And the Milton one, too, is, he said that it wasn't designed to last forever.
Maybe we'll have a look at that.
It's not a youngster, that's for sure.
Chief, do you wanna read the dog?
Well, do you have it?
Yeah. Andrew's been very, uh, good at giving his report.
You should come and read it. Alrighty, here we go. Town of Marlboro Dog Control. Monthly report, October first through October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Received a total eighteen calls this month, including six calls for service from the Marlboro PD, state police, and Ulster County Sheriff. We responded to four active complaints and/or cases which are now closed or resolved. We currently have two open cases that have been addressed but are ongoing and unresolved. We impounded three stray dogs. Three dogs were redeemed by their owners. Uh, one appearance ticket was issued this month. They have no dogs in the kennel. They have no dog bites to report. And they have two cases pending in the justice, Marlboro Justice Court. Andrew McKee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Gave it to you in the beginning. And, uh, this is from the assessors office. Our office proceeded, uh, processed twenty-one real property sales transfers. We worked on four property tax estimates. Our data collector is working in the areas of South Street, Milton Turn Park, Milton Cross Road, and Peach Lane. We are continuing to review our new construction and sales records for the twenty-eighteen assessment row. We worked on recording the sewer and water. What's that? Relie?
Really?
Yeah.
Re-leveys?
District?
Re-leveys?
Yeah, I think re-leveys, right. In the drainage district. So what is, uh, water re-leveys?
The levy text.
Looking at.
The water districts?
Okay.
The water district.
Okay. I got, I know what those are. Okay. Howard?
All right, strap on your seatbelts. Here we go.
There you go.
Planning board review, October two thousand seventeen. I have a few pages here. Meeting October second, two thousand seventeen. Everyone was there. Agenda, Hudson Valley Treehouse, eighty-eight, eighty gobbler's knob in Marlboro, public hearing, site plan. Applicant reappeared for the scheduled public hearing regarding their proposal to operate at Bed and Breakfast on the site. Several adjoining property owners voiced their dissatisfaction with the proposal, both individually and as a group, through their hired attorney. Additionally, several residents spoke in favor of the proposal. Members of the board questioned the use and safety of the private road, which the home occupation would utilize. The applicant agreed to utilize only two of the home's three bedrooms in order to meet the owner occupation stipulation required by local code. Applicant also agreed to have the town code enforcement officer perform an inspection of the building to complete, be completed before any decision was rendered. At the recommendation of engineer Pat Hines, the public hearing was adjourned until November twentieth. And the interim board members were encouraged to do individual site visits in order to better understand the issues pertaining to the private road and the ability for emergency vehicles to respond to the site. Next deadline, Friday, October sixth. Next scheduled meeting, Monday, October sixteenth. Now, I'm gonna read the minutes of the six, October sixteenth, meeting. Attendees were Chris Brand, Steve Clark, Cindy Lanzetta, Joe LaFara, Ben Trapani. Agenda eighty-six, Washington, sixteen thirteen Route nine W Milton Public Hearing Site Plan. The applicant reappeared for the continuation of the public hearing regarding their proposal. There was no public comment. DOT approval for the proposed curving was added to the record. Ulster County Planning Board recommended regarding lighting were agreed to by the applicant. A negative declaration and EAF approvals were approved. The project was granted final approval by resolution. Hudson Valley Treehouse, eighty gobbler's knob. Applicant reappeared for the continuation of the public hearing regarding their proposal to operate at Bed and Breakfast on site. Adjoining property owners again voiced their dissatisfaction with the proposal, both individually and as a group, through their hired attorney. Additionally, neighboring residents presented a legal motion regarding the restriction of any proposed use of the privately-owned road, which provides access to the proposed site. All board members in attendance visited the site and provided comment regarding the conditions of the road, particularly the hairpin turn previously identified as an area of concern by the jurisdictional fire company. The applicant provided a new letter indicating their willingness to attempt to remediate the turning radius after meeting with Marlboro Fire Chief Eric Maston and landscaper David Zambito. Members of the board expressed their concern regarding the application increasing the intensity of use of the non-conforming private road and the potential liability the road owners could, would assume should the proposal move forward. Mayor Lanzetta also reported on the Ulster County Planning Board's differing opinions of the proposal. The applicant was advised to investigate the possibility of obtaining a legal instrument releasing the road owners from liability. She was additionally advised to research the possibility of obtaining an additional umbrella policy providing coverage for the road owners in the event of injury and/or legal action being brought as a result of the road usage. The public hearing was adjourned until the November twentieth meeting. As a result of these ongoing discussions, the planning board requests the town board reexamine the local codes regarding the use of a private road in the town. Uh, Rod and Jack Gallagher through ninety-eight Peach Lane in Marlboro, public hearing subdivision. The applicant reappeared for a public hearing regarding the proposed lot line, which subdues an existing parcel segmented by a town road. There was no public comment, meets and bounds for all the lots were provided. Previous concerns regarding dedication of road fundage were addressed. The public hearing was closed. A negative declaration, EAF form approval, and final approval were all granted unanimously via resolution. Next item, Highland Pet Center, one thirty-one Billy Gap Road in Highland, public hearing amended the site plan subdivision. The applicant reappeared for continuation of public hearing regarding the proposed amended site plan. Ulster County Planning Board comments were received and the applicant agreed to their lighting recommendations and negative declaration, EAF form approval, and final approval all granted unanimously via resolution. Next item was Grand Slam Auto, nineteen twenty-four Route nine W Milton Sketch Site Plan. Applicant presented plans to build and operate a car sales business at the above address. The planning board moved to declare its notice of intent for lead agency for this proposal and circulated such. The project requires review by the DOT, Ulster County Health Department, and the Ulster County Planning Board. The applicant will address several technical issues regarding their proposal in return. Next item was Bayside Mixed Use, eighteen Berthely ever Marlboro Sketch Subdivision Site Plan. That's that over there right now.
Yep.
The applicants represented has presented a plan to build a subdivision, including one hundred and four two and three-bedroom rental units and a proposed twelve thousand six hundred foot commercial space on a proposed three-lot subdivision. The project had been, has been before the town board for several years and that is now appearing before the planning board for required review. A full sequer review has been performed on the project with the town board acting as lead agency. The town board must review and approve the requested business corridor overlay for the proposed commercial portion of the proposed project. All plans are required to be coordinated with the DOT review for access to Route nine W. The planning board will need to authorize forwarding all DOT review documentation to create and managing the town's traffic consultant. This project also involves coordination with the Marlboro Central School District due to the potential for conflicts with both pedestrian and vehicular traffic at the Marlboro Middle School. Any and all easements provided with regard to access to school district-owned property will require submission and review by the planning board. The project also requires submission and approval by the town of Marlboro Highways and superintendent. Any additional agreements under construction agreements under timelines between the Marlboro School District and Bayside for proposed improvements and additional parking spaces at the Marlboro Middle School requires submission and approval by the planning board. All plans should also be submitted to local jurisdictional fire departments for review and comments. Proposed costs, crosswalks in the parking areas and project access drives, as depicted, raise concern. Project phasing, grading plans, stormwater management, utility placement and maintenance, and proposed operation and maintenance of lighting in proposed roadway should all be received for review. All plans require submittal and review by the Marlboro Water and Sewer Departments. This project is subject to Ulster County Planning Board review. Detailed plan reviews are underway with the town engineer. The applicant will return at a later date. Next item, Trapani Farms, eighty-eighteen Latentown Road Milton Sketch Subdivision. Member, board member Ben Trapani recused himself from the discussion, discussion of this application. The applicants represented presented plans to subdivide a large parcel into two parcels at the above address in order to build a single-family home. Future access to a land-like parcel was discussed. The subdivision requires approval of subsurface sanitary systems and the highway department. The resulting lot must meet agricultural setbacks defined in section one fifty-five, fifty-two. The applicant will address these concerns in return at a later date. Next item, Merrick LaFara, discussions without attorney, engineer, and stenographer, and/or stenographer. The applicant appeared to discuss a proposed open-air auto showroom or viewing lot adjacent to his current auto business. The board recommended the applicant begin the formal approval process. Next deadline, a Friday, October twentieth. Next scheduled meeting, Monday, November sixth. Respectfully submitted, Chris Brand, chairman of Town of Marlboro Planning Board.
Thank you, Howard.
Okay.
Deep breath.
Yep.
What was the request that, I haven't seen anything, a letter on public roads, was it?
Which road? Yeah, that was the private road.
Private road?
The issue, we got it, the private roads, for the treehouses on a private road, yeah.
Yeah, the bed and breakfast one.
They want to look, us to look at the codes for private roads?
Mm-hmm. But we haven't seen anything yet.
Get their request, that's all.
Okay.
See Mayor Jennifer.
What private roads you gotta have? What do they want us to look at?
Well, right now, I think the private roads is, uh, unlimited and dependent on the town, uh, planning board, what they decide.
I thought we got.
It used to be, uh, where.
I thought it was four or more.
No, they changed.
They changed that.
It was changed?
Yeah, it was changed to be a continuous private road, unlimited, and it would be up to the planning board to decide.
Discretion.
Previously, we had that if you were, uh, if you were power, uh, joined to a, a major road, you get two houses and think four houses upon a, uh, private road.
It's four houses, usually.
So you, yeah, you were limited to six altogether.
Yeah, after four, you had to go public, right?
So, we'll see what they ask us, what they want.
Yeah. Uh, so let's go to report of committees. Uh, recreation committee, uh, you know, there's been something going on that, have we resolved that thing with, uh, Mrs. Horton and?
Did you get anything?
I haven't heard. I'll probably hear tomorrow.
Did you hear anything on that, Danielle?
I gave.
For, for Tom back?
I called today. I spoke to, um.
Patty? Or Marchie?
Eddie.
Eddie?
Um, and she was gonna call me back, but I, I didn't call, so I don't, I don't know where they're at with that. She, uh, he, he didn't want me to take his word for it, but they weren't sure if they were gonna be able to do it that day with, uh.
Yeah, conflicts. I mean, they wanted it for the whole day, basically, so. And I gave him Joe's, Joe's number.
They can't really do Sunday, cause that's their.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Yeah.
And they want a Tom back because of its access on nine W, they wanted the exposure.
Probably, yeah.
And they wanted it for the whole day. I gave him Joe's number.
Yeah, like a nine-to-five thing.
Right. So I don't know. I, I should know tomorrow, probably here tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.[1588.92] Thank you. Al, anything on the emergency management preparing this committee?
Nothing new.
We did not meet. It was my fourth. We were out campaigning, so we're gonna meet next month, Conservation Advisory Committee. Haven't met I T Committee the last time we met.
Yeah.
We should meet again and see, resolve that whole thing with the, what we'd like to see down here as far as...
Yep.
Projectors.
Now that we've got the new budget in place, so for next year, we should start planning for what we're gonna do.
1.2 million.
I haven't heard anything from the Milton Train Station Foundation. Milton Landing Citizens Committee, Al, anything going on?
No, we just got, obviously, the dog parks open and it has been being used. I just, I pop my head in every once in a while and we got about another 12 loads, trailer loads of soil brought into the upper part.
I saw that.
Yeah, so it's coming.
It was down there at the dog park and actually introduced myself to a couple of people and one came from Poughkeepsie and the other one came from Highland, so the word's getting out there.
It's spread.
And, yeah, it was great. I mean, they had a good time. It's a social thing, too. You sit under the gazebo, you talk to people.
It's working.
Hi, I'm Alway.
I'm supervisor.
Come up to my office.
What street you live on? Poughkeepsie? See you later.
So, anyhow.
I think you should just wear a button down.
Put a donation box there.
Daisy loves it down there.
Put a button. Hi, I'm Alway. Is that a supervisor? Make sure you pick up your new sign.
Yes.
Oh, the door in the door.
So, we had some complaints from some of the neighbors. It's become a destination for privacy, I guess, so I don't know how to put it, but...
Submarine races?
Yeah, whatever. I don't think we wanna go there, Howard. So, we did get some signs up, so this way our law enforcement could actually have some jurisdiction and...
You pushed anybody out of there, Jerry?
I haven't seen anything.
If they do catch me, they just believe them.
That's cool.
Now that the signs are, really needed the signs for case someone push back.
Yeah.
Because then we could make them.
Yeah.
Without a sign, they could argue that there's no signs and it's supposed to allow a leak.
Yeah.
They're right.
They're right.
We've had, no issues. I don't know many complaints. We did get a scoop before, but I don't know any new complaints.
No, I haven't heard anything. Usually I hear it on Facebook, too, you know, somebody will message me and saying, you know, I woke up at two o'clock this morning and this car is coming in. But I think those signs were a great idea and thank you and thank Gail Atwood for putting them up. We also put up the illustrations at each one of the sites where people could see what the division of the board is for Sands Avenue and down at the Landing and also across the street from the train station. Marlboro Economic Development Committee had a great time at the opening of the Bed and Breakfast at Mr. and Mrs. Coles. Would you like to say anything about that, Howard?
Yes, the, there was the open house at the Coles. Coles Bed and Breakfast in Marlboro, very well attended, probably 50 plus people there. Great, they did a very nice job, great house. And the other thing that's going on with the Economic Development Committee is the Trail Subcommittee has met. So, we kinda kicked off this official grant activity since we have the $5,000 grant from the Greenway. We've had two or three meetings. We had a meeting today with someone from the New Jersey, New York, New Jersey Trail Conference just to give us guidance on their experience with developing trails and they maintain hundreds of miles of trails across New York and New Jersey. A lot of it part of the Appalachian Trail. So, they had a lot of good advice for us and we're gonna follow up with some other contacts they've given us about how you approach homeowners that own property along the proposed trail and get their buy-in, that sort of thing. So, that's really the purpose of that grant, to get the buy-in. So, moving along.
Where are we at with the, the rock wall and the, the hamlet?
I don't know.
Well, I just got a disturbing letter from Patty Brooks.
Oh, boy.
And in the wisdom of the D O T, it changed hands from David Corrigan to the Ceta guy and she got this letter and she just emailed it to me. I'm gonna follow through tomorrow saying they don't allow stone wall fences along the 9W corridor, especially in the row. Where I was told, as long as we got, and we spent $1,200 on a site plan, that if we got that, we were good, we go through the process. So...
We have to fight that.
This was like a shock to her because she said, in the email, she wrote to the D O T representative saying, we did the site plan, we did all this, what's the next, what's the next in the process to getting this done? And they said, well, unfortunately, we don't allow stone walls. So, I have to follow through.
How is that possible?
Is that on...
They have one in U-Haul right up the road. They have a rock wall the whole distance of their whole property.
Rust could have one.
Rust has one.
I think that out of their row.
Oh, that, that one in U-Haul is definitely in the right of way. It's right on the road.
Do they say 9W?
It might not be as high, but it's a rock wall right on the road.
They say 9W?
The U-Haul in Menahope by Mary Jane's?
That might...
That's right on the road.
Yeah, it's 9W corridor. So, I have to check and I just got the email today.
At one time, they told us it was okay and now they're telling us it's not. Seems like we could fight that.
Can we get the guy who takes care of Route 9 at High Park? Maybe he'll sign off on it.
Yeah. It's the same region.
Pretty near as a stone wall from it.
I'm just, I mean...
Yeah, you're telling what they tell you.
You're just the messenger.
They'll shoot the messenger.
It's kinda like, I mean, like, when you, when you, when you go up 9W, you see plenty of rock walls.
I mean, it's ridiculous.
On 9W, it's kinda odd.
Were they trying to...
That one's, I'm just picking that one because it's fairly new over the last five years or so, right? And they just put it there, so...
I'll report to the board. I'll call Dave Corrigan and see what's going on because it was very misleading. He knew exactly what we're doing right from the get-go.
Yeah.
We didn't hide anything and...
Maybe we need to get Dave back.
It's, you know, just remind him, it's like, it's like 75 yards up from the library. The library has the rock wall in front of us.
Well, that one, I guess, is a little further.
I don't know if it's on the road.
That one's, that one might be further.
What's that? It does, it has a little one, yeah, but it's probably back off.
I mean, the library one might be back.
They're saying anything in their right of way, they're not allowed.
But I would say Rust is probably in the right of way now and I definitely would say that the U-Haul one would be in the right of way.
It's like 12 feet from the edge of the pavement.
Yeah.
Well...
I'll check it out.
What about the sign? Nothing on, she was doing that?
We can go through the sign. It all depends now of us designing the sign and putting it up.
Yeah. The next meeting of the, our committee is December 5th at the Coles House, so in case anybody want to drop in.
So, that sign, though, going back to the rock wall thing, we were gonna put a rock wall around it?
No, we couldn't.
But then they said, okay, I thought.
No, we can't put any, it has to be, because the concern is if somebody goes into that rock wall, they're gonna damage, it has to be a breakaway, four by fours or whatever to hold it up. So, this way, if somebody slid in, off it and hit it, it would break away and therefore...
It's gotta absorb energy, too. It's all, it's gotta absorb energy, it's gotta be breakaway, it's gotta slow it down.
We always knew that, but the stone wall along St. Mary's on the east side...
CVS has a rock wall around their sign.
It might not be in the row.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Well, I'm just saying.
I know it's not you, I'm just saying practically after they were like...
You know, if it's not in the right of way, if it's at on private property, you could do anything you want, just about.
Yeah.
So, if we make it 12 feet off the thing, then we could do it?
Yeah, and then we're into the church's property and the Tilcon and then we can't do it. So, I'll check tomorrow, see where it happened here.
Ridiculous.
Wow. All right, moving on.
Meet Me in Marlboro.
The event yesterday was coordinated by Meet Me in Marlboro at the Coles House. I don't know.
They did a great job.
Yeah, it was very nice. It was a nice job.
You know what the first one they did?
She's been doing a lot of advertising, you know, Meet Me in Marlboro.
Excuse me?
You know, they said this was the second one that they did, Meet Me in Marlboro?
Oh, ribbon cutting ceremony?
Yeah, you know what the first one was?
It wasn't the barber shop, was it?
No.
Um...
I don't know, maybe, maybe it was perch? I don't know. Just guessing. I thought that maybe you knew. Hamilton Milton Association Committee?
Yeah, they were doing their tree lighting on December 3rd, Sunday. Santa's coming, so...
November 3rd?
November 3rd, yeah. I believe it's at four o'clock.
December 3rd?
December 3rd, whatever. You said solar system before.
Touche, Alan.
December 3 is the tree lighting? December 3rd?
Yeah. I'll give a final, I just got the date. I couldn't get the time, but it's probably gonna be 3 or 4, like we usually do it.
Okay. Hopefully, the weather will...
Solar system.
Be good that day. Transfer Station Review Committee, Howard?
The only thing is coordinating with Gail to get, we do have a dumpster for the metal now, so we gotta get the pile of metal into the dumpster and we gotta do some work on the roads. The driveway in there is a little rough, so Gail's gonna go up and smooth it out.
You made a statement, maybe a month ago, how to...
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't followed up on that. I was out campaigning.
We could use that. You could use that for...
I don't know how much longer I'm gonna get away with that.
Salem Tomback Building. I, I can't try to contact Catherine a couple of times, she hasn't responded.
Who is the, who is the realtor? Who is the real estate agent?
Catherine Diorio.
Catherine Diorio?
Kathy Diorio, okay.
I texted her, she said there was no nothing on it, but she suggested if we, if we talked about it, to think about reducing the price, but it's at 425. She suggests 399.
Yeah.
So, I said I would mention it at the board, but...
I would, I would go for that. Do you wanna, are you asking for our approval?
I could ask your approval. She did ask, I'll, I'll make a motion.
That's her recommendation?
That was her recommendation, I mean...
I'll second that motion.
Yeah. I think we ought to, if we're serious, we gotta...
She said that was what, you know...
That's based on what?
That's what draws, she says, interest, once you get over that number. She said the big thing is, you know, it doesn't have the sewer and water, so that's, it's a toughie for, for certain things, so it limits your, what you can do there. So, it's not, it's nothing to do with the building per se, but it's, you know, like anything else, right? Water and sewer is a big thing for businesses.
So, it was a motion, Alan seconded it. I'm not in favor of reducing it?
I think I am.
I am.
I am.
Okay. So...
Only because I think if we're really serious about selling it, we have to...
At least get an offer. We don't have to always accept an offer.
No, right.
I mean, see what, see if, you gotta...
So, I'll call Catherine up and tell her we're reducing it to 399. So, it was three As and one A. Okay.
And Eddie's a Yay. No.
Eddie's not here.
Eddie's not here.
Municipal parking in the Hamilton Marlboro Milton, I think we exhausted that. We just got the Milton thing going. I think Robert's finally talking to Jim and Chip, so about maybe a park in Municipal Parking by Presbyterian Church.
Okay, they were actually doing some excavating today, right?
Well, they, the reason Mr. Bianco is doing some excavation is because he needs the fill and he figures...
Oh, okay.
He has to get rid of the fill, so it's a win-win situation.
Okay.
Design standards and that's up for the 9W corridor overlay district that's on the CAC. We're gonna look at the county's design standards. The L R P CFA grant application for the town of Marlboro.
I tried to look up to find out when the actual date is. It's sometime this month that they make the decision on the grant, so I, I couldn't find it quickly before the meeting, but I'll, I'll research it a little bit more. Yeah, it's this month we should know, at least on two of the grants we submitted. On the third one, the Tapier, I sent an email to them. Couple of weeks ago, I never heard back, so I'm gonna call them, find out, okay?
Sounds good. Yeah, I saw the email that you sent there.
Yeah.
Route 9W corridor study.
So, the big deal there is there is a public meeting...
Right.
Thursday night at 6:30 at the Marlboro Elementary School Cafeteria, so if you guys can make it, it really would be a good...
It's on our website, right, Danielle?
Yep.
Yeah, I've seen it.
And the public is certainly invited, so James, you're gonna probably be there, I'm sure, and...
Should be good.
Jerry, are you gonna be able to make it? No, okay. You're gonna be out killing deer.
He on his way hunting.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good, that would be good.
You could just sit on the back porch, you'd get just as many.
So, we need, in new business, we need to advertise for zoning board position? We need a motion to advertise?
Two openings, right?
I'll second that motion.
One in favor?
Aye.
So...
Alan and I seconded.
Alan, Alan.
So, these are, these are folks that are just coming off their normal rotation.
Yeah, and that's our process is that we...
Open it up.
Yep, open it up.
Not that they don't wanna serve again, right?
They do serve, they wanna serve. They got a letter from...
Do you know who it is? George and...
George and...
George and...
And Mr. McKeel.
McKeel, right?
Okay.
So, correspondence, I had one that highway superintendent said, please be advised that we have interviewed and selected Mr. Anthony De Freya for the position of M E O in the Highway Department. Mr. De Freya, a Class B driver's license and a OSHA 10 certificate certified. He will start November 13th. That's today, 2017, with a six month probation period. I know Anthony De Freya and he's a good hard worker and he just moved to Marlboro and married with one child, so he'd be a good asset. That's about all I have for correspondence. We talked about the 9W corridor. Moving right on, any public comments? That being said, we'll move right to the resolutions. So, Resolution A, Resolution 101 to adopt local law seven of the year 2017, amending the zoning map at the town of Marlboro to establish a business corridor overlay district under town code section 155-12H covering property at 1613 Route 9W Milton, New York, more particularly described as tax parcel number 103.3-4-19. I'm assuming that the board is aware of this resolution and aware of the piece of property that we're indicating here in this resolution? And if anybody doesn't know where it is, it's the old Erickson Building. So, it was pre-existing non-conforming, now it's conforming and it has HD overlay zone.
Number two. Number two and number three is gonna be over there.
So...
Supervisor Lynn Zettet.
Yes.
Councilman Corcoran.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
And Councilman Koenig.
Yes.
Yeah, Howard. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. So, Resolution 102, Resolution to introduce a local law of the year 2017, amending section 14928C schedule of water rates, Marlboro Water District of the town of Marlboro town code. Mr. Corcoran.
Sorry.
So...
Side meeting.
This is related to Mr. Noto's situation. Mr. Noto has written a check of $1,500 which will cover the engineering and the legal fees, also the fees for introducing the law and putting in the code book. So, what this allows is we would be controlled if somebody asked us, you know, we'd like to get in the district, it would be up to the town board to decide, yea or no. So, that's what the resolution is and it's also, we have to have a public hearing and a public hearing is, will be held in relationship to the proposed changes that's set forth in the form of a notice and it would be November 27th. Oh, okay, that's when we'll have the public hearing, on the November 27th at 7 o'clock.
Yeah.
So, we move for that adoption notice of the public hearing. Here you go, right here, Al. So, Danielle, once we agree to this, you'll advertise for the public hearing?
Yeah, within the law, though, it asks...
This is to introduce the law?
Yeah.
And then we'll have a public hearing?
Couple of typo.
So and so blank introduce the following proposed local law. And then on the next page, seconded by, and then...
Yeah, that's the way they like to do that.
I'm not sure why that's all that...
So Al, you introduced it and?
We're in November twenty. It was introduced by myself.
I'll second.
Alan's excellent.
And seconded by Councilman Koenig. And now.
What local laws is this number? Do you know yet?
I have no idea.
Well, there are two on the agenda tonight, so it'll be either eight or none.
Eight or none.
As long as everything goes smoothly, probably eight comes first. Um, but we don't number them until we.
So we pass them.
So would you like to do the roll call, and then we'll establish what number it'll be?
Supervisor Lanzetta.
Yes.
Councilman Corcoran.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Koenig.
Yes.
Moving right along, Resolution one oh three to accept a donation to the town of Marlboro. Supervisor Lanzetta proposes the following, whereas Co-Part is donating a drone and thermal camera to the town of Marlboro, please department, and whereas the donation policy adopted by the town board of the town of Marlboro on October tenth, two thousand and six, I think I did that policy, states all donations must be accepted by the town board. Now therefore, resolve that, the town board of the town of Marlboro hereby accepts said donation. Thank you, uh, Chief, for, uh, this sounds great.
Jeremino headed that one.
What's this worth, Jerry?
Uh, the check is for just over thirty-five hundred dollars. That's, that's, uh, drone, thermal imaging camera, color camera, spare battery, spare blades, the controller, uh, and eight hours of training.
Cool.
So, you know, we use it at our discretion, right?
We use it for whatever we want.
Yeah, if somebody's missing or something, or?
Yeah, if somebody's missing, it's just another tool in our toolbox. Um, we can use it for, I mean, if you want to put it up and take a look at the construction they're doing, we can do anything.
But this takes pictures now and everything, right? So this'd be cool to get some pictures on the web, Danielle?
Yeah, pictures and video.
Pictures of the building, pictures of the landscape, pictures of the heavens. Meet Me in Marlboro did, right?
So what's the legal ramifications as far as like, if you were to actually film somebody committing a crime? Is that?
We could use as evidence.
Evidence?
Absolutely, no different than the in-car camera system or anything like that, absolutely.
Um, I didn't, I know the law's changed or?
No, no, obviously you can't fly into someone's window and take pictures like that. Those rules all apply, you know. Um, you can't fly in air, in certified airport space, store airport space or like that. If the government declares no-fly zone over Marlboro, I guess we can't use our drone anymore, but I don't want to see that happen. We'll be FAA certified, uh, because you have to have a license for it. Um, so we have, uh.
How many people will get certified?
Nick Jeremino gets certified.
Okay.
And then I think we're gonna send Sergeant Briggs. So I'm gonna try and get two, but that was part of one of the issues that we didn't budget for. So I gotta see what I can work out and figure out. Maybe some, one of those two will split and pay for it themselves. So we'll see.
How much, how much is it? How much is?
It's only a hundred dollars. It's not a deal, but they might, because they want the ability to fly it. So I'll talk.
It's a toy. They want it flying. And moves for its adoption.
Councilman Corcoran?
Yes.
Councilman Koenig?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Supervisor Lanzetta?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, um, like the previous overlay, there's a process. The process goes, Tom Corcoran, the building superintendent, is the gatekeeper. He looks at the applicant who wants to change it to a overlay zone, HD. And once he approves it, then it goes to the town board, and now it's at the town board level because Mr. Corcoran has approved it. He looked at the diagram, looked at everything that was supposed to come in. Uh, it's not a lengthy application, but it's a thorough application. So this is the process. This is what's in our code, so this is what we follow. So Resolution, Resolution one oh four to approve the conceptual development plan for Bayside Construction LLC. Uh, this is whereas the town board has received a petition from Bayside Construction LLC for the establishment of a business corridor overlay district to accommodate commercial development of approximately two point five acres along Route nine W as part of a mixed-use development. And whereas the town board concludes that the petition includes the submission required by Section one fifty-five dash twelve five of the Marlboro Town Code, and whereas the town board has previously issued a secret finding statement for the mixed-use project known as Bayside, be it resolved that the town board has reviewed the conceptual development plan for commercial use of the subject two point five acres, currently forming a part of Marlboro Tax Parcel one oh nine point one dash four dash twenty-nine, and it be further resolved that the mixed-use development is hereby, is already before the planning board for site plan review of all aspects other than business corridor overlay. And be fur, be further resolved that the town board concludes that the conceptual development plan is acceptable and complete for purpose of review by the planning board pursuant, pursuant to Section one fifty-five dash twelve five D of the Town Code, and be, be it further resolved that the town board refer the matter to the planning board for the above purpose. And the foregoing resolution was duly put to a vote, which resulted as follows.
I just have one question, Al, and it's.
Sure.
Doesn't, it, do we know if he's, he's just getting this approved now, or does he, does he have plans to really do this, or is this just for future?
Well, this is the map up there. This is for the future. So when they went to the planning board, they, they, uh, presented their case with the apartments, the hundred and four apartments, and they also included the non-conforming pre-existing piece of property along nine W that is not zoned for commercial.
Yes.
So in order to get it.
Yeah.
Everybody back on, on track, they have to go through us, and now this was.
I understand that part. Yeah, I understand. I, I just wondered if he was actually gonna do something in the near term, or probably not.
Uh, what not, what they conceptually have there is, I think they have a twelve thousand square foot, uh, building.
But he's not really.
But it could be anything after that. But then, uh, that conceptual has to come back to us.
Sure, sure.
Back to the planning.
He's just getting the HD laid on top of it.
We'll put the overlay zone on it. They'll be good to go, and then if they want to do anything, they have to go back to the planning.
Yeah, I think he just wants to get it HD.
He wants it designated, yeah.
He may, he may not even build it. He may sell it, right?
Right.
Yeah, he might flip it. Now it's HD, and he can sell it, right?
Yeah.
And then we go through the planning process.
I, I, and I think because of segregation, that they have to include it, right? Because that's part of the project. Segmentation, segmentation, segmentation.
We know what you meant.
I've been hanging around this one.
I know what you mean, but it is.
Yeah.
So that's what that's all about.
Yep.
Supervisor Lanzetta.
Yes.
Councilman Corcoran.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Koenig.
Yes.
Okay. That's number three.
Yep.
We're get, we're getting there.
We're getting there.
So, uh, this is what Joel was talking about, Resolution one oh five to induce, introduce a local law of the year twenty seventeen, adding a new chapter one fifty-four entitled authority to establish a community choice aggregation energy program. And I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but.
You gotta do the same thing.
The, uh.
Al Lanzetta seconded by.
Yeah.
Who's gonna second this one?
Who wants to second this?
Second it.
Howard's gonna second this?
Yep.
Councilman Baker.
And, uh, we'll have to put out for a public hearing. Also Danielle on this.
Yep.
Probably the same thing, huh?
Yep.
For twenty-seven, next, next meeting?
Yeah.
Yep. And, uh, would you poll the board, please?
Supervisor Lanzetta.
Yes.
Councilman Corcoran.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Koenig.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Resolution one oh six, this to adopt a negative declaration. This is basically for phase two of the sanitary sewer extension. Uh, we need this to complete the grant application, and, uh, basically it's the same thing as we did as phase one. Uh, I can read it, but it's the same thing.
I'll second this one.
This is for the Larkin money. This is the Larkin money right now.
And it moves for its adoption.
Councilman Corcoran.
Yes.
Councilman Koenig.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Supervisor Lanzetta.
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Resolution, uh, one oh seven to adopt the twenty eighteen final budget. Supervisor Lanzetta proposes the following, whereas the town board of the town of Marlboro duly held a public hearing on the twenty eighteen budget on October the twenty-third, twenty seventeen, and whereas said hearing was duly advertised and held at a point of time and a place, and all persons interested in the subject thereof were given the opportunity to be heard, and whereas the town board of the town of Marlboro desires to adopt the twenty eighteen final budget, now therefore be it resolved that the twenty eighteen final budget is hereby adopted.
Councilman Corcoran.
Yes.
Councilman Koenig.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Supervisor Lanzetta.
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen. That was, uh.
Another one down.
Another one down, and it was a great budget.
What other one we got here?
One oh eight.
You got a lot of resolutes.
You got lots, yeah.
Uh, resolute, huh, I'm a busy man, gentlemen. This is, uh, this is one of, uh, the, uh, the, uh, property tax assessments that we agreed about, uh, Mr. Pollak.
Yeah.
So we're moving along, so this is one down. I think there's seven more to go. Uh, this is Resolution one oh eight to approve settlement, uh, whereas a real property tax assessment review proceeding was commenced by nineteen forty Route nine W Milton LLC regarding the premises known as, and by nineteen forty Route nine W, Marlboro, New York, SBL one oh three point one dash two dash sixty-four, to review its tax assessment for the tax year of twenty seventeen. And now there be, therefore be resolved that Mackey Butts and Weiss LLP, Rebecca A. Volk, Esquire of Counsel, is authorized to enter into a consent judgment in the form attached, settling the tax surtrary proceedings brought by nineteen forty Route nine W Milton LLC against the town of Marlboro for the tax year of twenty seventeen, and to assign much other and further papers are, as are necessary to officiate the settlement. And so basically, I think, that the settlement was to go from, uh, originally assessment of a hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-nine.
Eight hundred, uh, hundred and twenty-eight thou, so it's twenty thousand, two hundred difference.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
What do you think, Ralph?
Yeah, Ralph, what do you, did you ever get that?
So Ralph away?
Fifty-five hundred, I think it's like.
What's that?
He asked, uh, most of those said, I've got five hundred.
Yeah. So I think it's a good compromise.
Costs a lot of money.
We don't, we don't wanna, we don't wanna show, of course, the board. We don't wanna show it, right?
No, we don't.
You're right.
That's right.
He looked like he was sleeping over there.
Very well. Trying to wake him up. So, roll call, please.
Supervisor Lanzetta.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Corcoran.
Yes.
Councilman Koenig.
Yes.
Okay. I have just one question about the Tomback building. Uh, is this the last road we go into? I mean, if we don't sell it, what are we doing? We're just gonna keep on going four, five years?
No.
I disagree. I think that's a bad plan.
I do too.
You have to have some kind of plan.
Now.
If we're not gonna sell it, then let's do something about it.
One thing I didn't do also, 'cause I was out campaigning, was, we had this meeting we were supposed to set up with, with the Presbyterian Church. Still need to do that.
Right.
So I will get on that. But I agree with you, Al. We can't go on endlessly on this thing, so.
So we reduce the price, and if we don't hear anything within nine months, do we revisit it?
Six months, I would say.
Six months on the contract.
The contract's up in six months, okay.
So she might have to send something over.
I just, I just don't wanna, you know, the next thing is, well, three ninety-nine is selling, let's make it three fifty.
Well, that may be what happens.
I mean, I think we should have a plan.
The only thing I would say is, what, what is the, what would be your plan, though, to do, what would it?
It's the whole of the media.
My.
No, I mean, I, I just kinda.
I'm, I'm hearing a lot from seniors that would like to have it.
Well, that, to do that.
And I like, I hear people saying they like to have a place where they could do a birthday party or a fifty anniversary in the kitchen.
So you're saying for rental purposes and stuff?
And, and, you know. And the other thing is, there's this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's floating around there with Frank.
It's just like twenty-five percent of what we need to make the building work a lot.
I don't think so a lot. I think that, I think that, I think that's very negative. You don't want to, I understand that, that you don't wanna sell it. But don't make a mark like that. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money.
We already proved it. We proved it like eight months ago.
We don't need a sprinkler.